6:30, having arrived, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Benford?
Present.
Present. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Present. Alder Carter?
Present.
Present. Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry?
Here.
Present. Alder Evers?
Here.
Present. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Present. Alder Foster?
Here.
Present. Alder Furman?
Present.
Present. Alder Halverson?
Present.
Present. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Present. Alder Heck?
Here.
Present. Alder Limer? Limer? My apologies. Present. Vice President Martin? Vice President Martin is present. I see her here. Alder Mianzi?
Present.
Present. Alder Rivera?
Here.
Present. Alder Vitavir?
Present.
Present. Alder Wihili?
Present.
Present. Alder Aboris?
Here.
Present. President Abbas?
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. Can we have the meeting instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Alders, if you are able, please activate your video for purposes of quorum and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All Alders and staff have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the list, email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll just remind us all to please be kind and respectful in our dealings with each other tonight. That includes registrants, staff, and members of the council, and to please refrain from using any profanities in this space. We'll move to suspension of the rules. President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to suspend of the rule.
Second. Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended for items so designated on the agenda. We'll start with our honoring resolutions. Item one is Legisstar 67300, and I will call on Alder Foster to make the motion and read this one.
I apologize, Mayor. I don't have a reading copy in front of me. It's going to take me a little time to pull it up, or if somebody else has, then they'd be able to read it.
Why don't you go ahead and pull it up, and we'll ask President Abbas to make the motion and buy you a little time. You're a muted president. There you go.
Motion to adopt.
Second. It's moved and seconded to adopt, and as soon as Alder Foster is ready?
I think I've got it here.
Okay, go ahead, Alder.
In recognition and appreciation of distinguished service, I'm longtime MPO board member Ed Minahan, honoring his memory. Whereas the City of Madison serves as the fiscal and administrative agent for the Greater Madison MPO and has six representatives on the MPO policy board. Whereas the Greater Madison MPO is a designated MPO for the Madison metropolitan area with responsibilities to perform metropolitan transportation planning and program activities. And whereas Edmund Ed Minahan ably served on the MPO policy board as the town's representative from 2012 to 2021, helping guide the MPO through two updates of the regional transportation plan, prioritization and approval of projects through the annual transportation improvement program, and a number of other planning efforts. And whereas, Minahan also served on the MPO's partner regional planning agency, the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, from 2013 to 2021. And whereas, Minahan became a supervisor for the Town of Dunn back in 1977, was elected town chair in 1979, and continued to serve as chair for 42 years until his passing this year, providing inspiration, leadership, and vision for the town. And whereas, through this public service, Minahan was a champion of cultural and ecological conservation, and his leadership as Dunn Town Chair has led to the permanent preservation of wetlands, prairies, farmlands, and oak savannas in a town for future generations to enjoy. Whereas, in his elected public service, Minahan always provided thoughtful input and maintained a demeanor that made working with him a pleasure. And whereas, Minahan also advocated for justice and equality and exhibited outstanding community spirit by providing service to the Greater Madison community in many other ways, including serving as a long-term volunteer chef for a Grace Hospice, donating many hours to Habitat for Humanity, and creating innovative managed healthcare delivery systems and healthcare clinics throughout southern Wisconsin. And whereas, through all of this work, Minahan provided us all with an example of unselfish, thoughtful, and generous service to others, and how to live life thinking of others and working for their benefit. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Madison Common Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude to Ed Minahan for his outstanding public service and dedication to the MPO, CARPSY, Town of Dunn, and the Greater Madison community, and notes that such tireless service is rare and worthy of emulation. Yet further resolved that the council honors his memory and celebrates his life and accomplishments and expresses its admiration for a life well-lived. Be it finally resolved that the council extends to his daughter and extended family the city's gratitude for all that Ed has done to the Greater Madison community.
Thank you, Alder. And we do have two folks here to receive the honoring resolution. We'll start with Joanne Simon, and then go to Bill Schaefer.
Okay. Thank you all for this beautifully worded and heartfelt city resolution honoring my dad. I'm very happy to accept it. As you, many of you might know, he was rather determined about his vision and ideas, but you always knew his heart was in the right place, and preserving the rural nature of the Town of Dunn and building a better Greater Madison community was his life's mission. I know he truly enjoyed working with all of you to make that happen, so thank you all for your hard work, and again, thank you for honoring my dad. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and our condolences on your loss.
Thank you very much.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you. I'm Bill Schaefer, the director, planning manager for the Greater Madison MPO. I've been manager since 2010, so the whole time Ed served on the board, I thoroughly enjoyed working with Ed, and I do fondly recall the two board meetings that he showed up in his chef shirt with his homemade bread, which everyone loved. Ed routinely expressed his appreciation for the work of the MPO staff, which meant a lot to me, coming from someone with this record of public service. And I was very pleased when the city Alders on the board expressed the desire for the city to adopt the resolution honoring Ed and think it is very appropriate. One of the things that makes City of Madison and the greater metro area such a great place to live is the accessibility we have to natural and open space areas. Ed's pioneering conservation work for the Town of Dunn leaves a legacy for future residents to enjoy. His service to the community in so many ways is admirable. He was a wonderful man. We sorely miss, and really appreciate Joan taking the time to accept the resolution on his behalf.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, or is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor, and thank you again, Joanne and Bill, for being here. Brings us to item two, which is Legisstar 67413. President Abbas, a motion?
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt, and President Abbas, I believe you're starting this one.
Yes, thank you. It is my honor to read this resolution. Whereas, an estimated 300 youth in Dane County are homeless every night, and whereas, one in three youth will be approached for sex in exchange for food, shelter, drugs, et cetera, within 48 hours of leaving home. And whereas, 75% of these youth have already or at high risk of dropping out of school. And whereas, in 1971, a small group of volunteers came together for the welfare of the many runaway in the Madison area, they began seeking funding through collaborative partners to create a place for young people on the run to obtain appropriate shelter. Counseling and referrals to assist the family in the resolution of their conflict. And whereas, 50 years later, after mergers, movies, and name change, Biopatch Youth Services exist with many of the same goals and continue to expand services to support needs of youth in Dane County and...
Whereas, the Briar Patch Mission is strengthening the lives of youth and families. And whereas, Briar Patch offers a broad array of services to runaway, homeless, and at-risk youth, and works closely with local governments and other nonprofit organizations to provide unique programs that fill service gaps. And whereas, Briar Patch provides the first and only youth shelter in Dane County, available for youth ages 12 through 17. And whereas, each year, Briar Patch serves approximately 3,000 unduplicated youth. And whereas, 2021 marks the 50th anniversary of Briar Patch Youth Services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Madison congratulates Briar Patch on 50 years of service to young Madisonians in crisis. Be it further resolved that the Madison Common Council and mayor deeply thank Briar Patch staff, volunteers, and supporters for their dedication to Madison's youth, and encourage all Madisonians to explore ways to support the young people in their communities and throughout the city.
And we have with us tonight Gloria Reyes to accept the resolution. Gloria?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Common Council, for this resolution, recognizing Briar Patch Youth Services for 50 years of service to our Dane County community. Special thanks to President Abbas and Alder Vitavir for leading this. And again, I'm Gloria Reyes, currently serving as CEO of Briar Patch Youth Services, and I will accept this honoring resolution on behalf of the Briar Patch staff and Board of Directors. When I first started Briar Patch almost a year ago, I received emails and calls from people who, at one point in their lives, used our services, who are now teachers, police officers, social workers, and it was Briar Patch that supported them in a very critical time in their life. We have a few events coming up planned to celebrate 50 years, so I hope you can join us. Please visit www.briarpatch.org to register and attend our upcoming events. I want to take this time to share with you a little bit about Briar Patch Youth Services and our youth in Dane County. You typically will not see our children sleeping on the streets. They usually are living and sleeping on the floors at a front house or hotel rooms. Our children are experiencing challenges with parents or family who have lost housing, forcing them to navigate a place to stay. Our children are leaving homes due to violence and abuse. Our children are LGBTQ transgender who are not accepted at home and trying to find a safest, safe place where they can navigate a very difficult transition in coming out. I want to share with you a story. Shortly after I started at Briar Patch, last winter, right in the midst of COVID, Madison police officers came across two young boys, a 12-year-old and a 14-year-old. They were walking outside in the cold on a very snowy day. The MPD officer stopped to check on their welfare. The officer mentioned Briar Patch to them and asked if they wanted a ride. They said no, but instead will take a bus to Briar Patch. And I was notified by the Madison police officer that there were two boys that were, that maybe, may show up to Briar Patch by bus. I was uncertain if they would make their way to Briar Patch, and thankfully, they did later on that evening. Turns out, the boys had not eaten for days and had been roaming around the neighborhood. Their mom was struggling with housing and significant trauma, and they were not being taken care of. They spent a few days with us until we were able to communicate with mom and other family members. We provided parent support and wraparound services for the family by connecting them to resources. That is the kind of work that Briar Patch does, right? We also have a juvenile justice and restorative justice program that help deviate youth away from the justice system. We are changing the trajectory of the lives of our most vulnerable youth in Dane County. Let me share some national statistics on homelessness, youth homelessness. Each year, an estimated 4.2 million youth and young adults experience homelessness, of which 700,000 are unaccompanied minors, meaning they are not part of a family or accompanied by a parent or guardian. On any given night, approximately 41,000 unaccompanied youth ages 13 to 25 experience homelessness. The Voices of Youth Count from Chapin Hill at the University of Chicago found that one in 10 young adults ages 18 to 25, and at least one in 30 adolescents ages 13 to 17 experience some form of homelessness, unaccompanied by a parent or guardian over the course of a year. 29% of homeless youth report having substance misuse problems. 69% of homeless youth report mental health problems. 33% had been part of a foster care system. Astonishing statistics. The, one of the, the lack of a high school diploma or general equivalency diploma is the number one correlation for elevated risk of youth homelessness. I want to share with you now just a brief video on how Briar Patch is having an impact in our community. So I'm just going to bear with me. I'm going to share my screen and get to this video.
Well, what is the Briar Patch in literature? It's a place where you can go and be concealed and hidden, and if things go well, you can be protected. So that was the whole, that was the motivation. It seemed to, for whatever reason, it seemed to click with people. Yeah, Briar Patch. That would be us. We can be a Briar Patch.
I started with Briar Patch probably around the age of 18, because Briar Patch was already in the neighborhood. I was getting some good rapport from some of the people in the community for the work that I was helping out with in the community and ally. I ended up becoming the work team supervisor of Briar Patch. What nobody knew was I came to work every day, clean, dressed, and everything. I was living in the hotel across the street from Thia Road, and I was coming to work every day.
Back in 2016, when I was a student at MATC and Madison Memorial High School, I was in a situation where I needed help, and one of my Madison College teachers reached out to Briar Patch to help me find housing.
In about 1971, my wife and I had looked into becoming foster parents, and it was clear that things were not working, at least in our eyes, the way they should, that what was needed was something other than having the police pick them, pick up runaways and return them to home. And it was also the fear that we just simply couldn't allow kids to wander around because of the Mifflin Street and the alternative culture that existed, the youth culture and all other things, that that was not necessarily a healthy environment. So we had to, in effect, find some way of finding another way, and that was the origin of Briar Patch, is that let's simply create, if we can, an alternative agency that would treat kids and their families differently.
My experience was, my mom passed away, so I had to grow up. There was no question that that had to be the case. Being in that space, there's a lot of anxiety that comes with that, and there is a lot of trauma attached to becoming 18, because also during that time, I, again, transitioning, trying to figure out where I was going to stay, who I was going to stay with, where I was going to go. So there's all these pressures.
I had a lot of difficulties, such as getting transportation to school and work, stable, you know, housing, and making sure that I had money for like, school supplies and for food as well. I had no one by my side, none of my family members, and the people who supported me the most were Briar Patch.
I see Briar Patch as a huge catalyst, as before, of really advocating for not only young people in general, but there's this beautiful space where, you know, creating space for young people to not, you know, just like the shelter, but more of a communal space for our young adults and young people to be able to come to, be a safe place to come, and not only seek shelter, but also seek resources in the community.
I am who I am at this point because of Briar Patch, because they were that stepping stone that helped me gain the life skills that I needed to finish school and have stability in my life. What would have happened, I would have ended up homeless without stability, and possibly, I wouldn't have completed my internship, and possibly, wouldn't have graduated from high school.
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to just end by saying, when we invest in Briar Patch, and when we invest in young people, we invest in prevention, and we invest in the future of our city. Thank you so much for this resolution. Appreciate all of you and your time this evening.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item two, and that takes us to item three, which is Legisstar 67414. President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Figueroa Cole, I believe you're starting with this one.
Hello, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to kick it off first.
Go ahead, Alder Evers.
For sure. Well, I'll be honest, it's an honor to, to read this resolution with my colleague Alder Figueroa Cole. So that's going to be a little different. For each whereas clause, I'll be speaking first in English, and Yanet Figueroa Cole will be speaking in Spanish for both proud Latinos, both Boricua, actually, Puerto Rican. I happen to be also Mexican as well, but that said, I'm going to hand it over to Yanet Figueroa Cole for the Spanish part of the, speaking of the resolution regarding Hispanic Heritage Month. And thanks for everyone who actually came out for the Viva Mexico event. This past Sunday, I saw the mayor there, which is a part of the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration and Mexican Independence Day celebration. So anyways, I'll kick it off. Whereas, each year, the United States recognizes the economic, cultural, and social contributions that Hispanics/Latinx people have brought to our nation.
Considerando que la rica y distintiva cultura de la comunidad hispana Latinx siempre ha sido parte integral de la identidad de nuestro país y...
And whereas, the rich and distinctive culture of the Hispanics/Latinx community has always been an integral part of our country's identity.
Considerando que la rica... Considerando que la rica y distinta cultura de la comunidad hispana siempre ha sido parte integral de la identidad de nuestro país y...
And whereas, this month, this month represents the anniversary of the independence for Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, and Nicaragua.
Considerando que este mes representa el aniversario de la independencia de Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, México, and Nicaragua.
And whereas, based on 2020 census data, the Hispanics/Latinx population of the United States totals 62.1 million, which represents 19% of our population, making Hispanics/Latinx people the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority.
Considerando que según los datos del censo del 2020, la población hispana Latinx de los Estados Unidos es un total de 62.1 millones, lo cual representa el 19% de nuestra población, lo que hace a los hispanos Latinx la minoría étnica o racial más grande del país.
Whereas, Hispanics/Latinx people are a diverse racial group, including those who identify as Afro-LatinoX, Indigenous, and multiracial folks.
Y considerando que las personas hispanas Latinx son un grupo racial diverso que incluye aquellos que se identifican como Afro-Latinx, Indígena, y multiracial.
And whereas, the Hispanic Heritage Month is one of enormous pride for Hispanics/Latinx living in the United States.
Y considerando que el mes de la herencia hispana es un gran orgullo para los hispanos Latinx que viven en los Estados Unidos.
And whereas, Madison is fortunate to count among its population a dynamic Hispanic/Latinx community that plays an important role in our city's economy and society.
Y considerando que Madison tiene la suerte de contar entre su población con una comunidad hispana Latinx dinámica que juega un papel importante en la economía y la sociedad de nuestra ciudad.
And whereas, we encourage all Manassodians to recognize and applaud the many contributions made by our Hispanics/Latinx community to enhance the quality of life in our city.
Y considerando que exhortamos... Y considerando que exhortamos a todos los Madisonianos a reconocer y aplaudir las numerosas contribuciones hechas por nuestra comunidad hispana Latinx para mejorar la calidad de vida en nuestra ciudad.
Now, therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and Madison Common Council recommend, recognize the month of September 15th, 2020 run through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Madison.
Ahora por lo tanto se resuelve que la alcaldesa y el ciricanto reconozcan al mes del 15 de septiembre del 2021 al 15 de octubre de 2021 como el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Madison.
Be it further resolved that the mayor and common council congratulate our Hispanic/Latinx community on this significant month and thank them for their contributions to the vibrancy of the city of Madison.
Se resuelve además que la alcaldesa y el ciricanto feliciden a nuestra comunidad hispana Latinx en este mes tan significativo y que le agradezcan por sus contribuciones a la vitalidad de la ciudad de Madison.
Thank you both for the reading. And we have no registrants on this item. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item three? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. That takes us to item four, which is Legis 67423, recognizing National Voter Registration Day, National Voter Education Week and Election Hero Day. President Abbas, a motion please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. It's my honor to read this resolution. Whereas, the city of Madison is committed to transparency, openness and inclusivity through civic engagement. And whereas, the mission of the city clerk's office is to provide equitable access to open government by promoting the inclusion and full participation of all residents in the democratic process. And whereas, thousands of Madison residents need to update their voter registration having moved since they last voted. And whereas, many eligible voters are unaware that their right to vote was restored once they completed all the terms of a felony sentence. And whereas, convenient and accessible options for voter registration are imperative for active participation in the election process. And whereas, voter education plays an important role in the integrity and transparency of our elections. And whereas, the city of Madison recognizes the importance of diverse partnerships with nonprofit organizations, our university and colleges, businesses and other community organizations to facilitate the right to vote. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city of Madison is extending civic season by recognizing National Voter Registration Day on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, and commits to joining national efforts to support voter registration and citizen participation in elections. And be it further resolved, that the city of Madison will participate in National Voter Education Week, October 4th through 8th of 2021, to help voters bridge the gap between registering to vote and understanding their options for casting a ballot. And be it finally resolved, that the city of Madison will commemorate Election Hero Day on November 1st, 2021, recognizing the immense importance and diligent work of the city clerk's office, community partners conducting voter outreach, community partners hosting voter outreach events and Madison's 6,000 poll workers. We may have folks from the clerk's office here in addition to Heather, who is clerking today's meeting. In fact, here is our amazing election hero, Mary Beth Whittlebell. Mary Beth?
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited once again about National Voter Registration Day. And next Tuesday, we will be conducting voter registration drives at all City of Madison libraries from 12 to 5:00. We will be alongside the library's dream bus at Teresa Terrace, Leopold and Bridge Lake Point Winona Community Center next Tuesday afternoon. We will be conducting voter registration drives on the UW campus at the Health Science Learning Center, Engineering Mall, Library Mall and the UW Madison South Village at the Village on Park. And then we will have two community hubs set up where we will be joined by community partner organizations in the afternoon from 12 to 4:00. We will be in the parking lot at the United Way on Atwood. And the United Way will also be providing information about their 211 services. We also will be at the Urban League's Park Edge, Park Ridge Employment Center where people can learn about the employment services offered by the Urban League, eviction support through Urban Triage, Alzheimer's and dementia support, UW health equity. And there will also be music and food at that event. But most importantly, voter registration available and we'll also be able to help answer questions about the voting process.
Thank you, Mary Beth. And I know that we just are about to formally declare November 1st Election Hero Day, but I'd like just to say for the record that I think all of our clerks are election heroes every day. And I very much appreciate all of the work that you and your staff do. And I hope you see your virtual round of applause. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to, oh, Alder Wihilehe, please. You're muted, Alder.
May I be added as a sponsor too?
Of course, Alder.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item four? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item four and thank our clerks again. All right, we have no petitions or communications. We have no early public comment. I'm just refreshing to make sure that that's true. And so that takes us to the consent agenda. President Abbas.
Yes. At this time, a consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action listed for each item except number one item which have registrants wishing to speak, number two item which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, number three, the item which all the persons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Agenda item number six is a public hearing item. Agenda item number nine is confirming hearing, legislative file number 66888 submitting the appointment of Norman D. Davis for confirmation of a five-year term as a civil rights director. Agenda item number 10 is confirmation hearing, legislative file number 67087 submitting the appointment of Mary Beth Whittlebell for confirmation of a five-year term as a city clerk. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority vote item will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 28, legislative file number 66869, transferring certain properties from P C E D to the stormwater utility and amending the planning and community and economic development budget by budget requires 15 votes. Agenda item number 37, legislative file number 67094, substitute amending the 2021 adopted operating budget to transfer fund within agency budget based on projected spending through the second quarter of 2021, required 15 votes. Agenda item number 38, legislative file number 67105, resolution authorizing issuance of $81,300,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2021A. Recommended action is for approval, required 15 votes. Legislative file, agenda item number 39, legislative file number 67106, resolution authorizing issuance of $3,990,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2021B. Recommended action is approval, required 15 votes. Agenda item number 40, legislative file number 67107, resolution authorizing the issuance of $17,800,000 general obligation corporate purposes bond, series 321C. Recommended action is approval, 15 vote requires. Agenda item number 42, legislative file number 67116, amending the 2021 capital budget for engineering Nature Street to add 220,000 in special assessment funding, requires 15 votes. Agenda item number 43, legislative file number 67117, amending the 2021 water utility capital budget to increase the budget allocation by 75,000 for water utility facility improvement reserve funding to add wheelchair access entrance at six doors at the Olin Avenue Office Building, required 15 vote. Agenda item number 44, legislative file number 67122, accepting additional emergency rent assistance program funds from the U.S. Treasury Department awarded under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to sustain effort to prevent eviction and promote housing stability for eligible households in Dane County affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, requires 15 vote. Agenda item part of consent agenda with additional recommendation as noted. Agenda item number 27, legislative file number 66091, alternative A resolution to provide a plan for Beijing Crease parity to general municipal employ. Recommended action is to adopt the amended alternative resolution. Agenda item number 46, legislative file number 66098, adopting the Odena area park, Odena area plan as a supplement to the comprehensive plan and directing staff to implement the recommendation contained in the plan. Recommended action is adopt with proposal added on September 16, 2021, Odena Area Power Plant Staff Report. Agenda item number 66, legislative file number 67405, authorizing the city execution of a purchase and sale agreement between the City of Madison and Dan Lily LLC or their successor and assigns for the purpose of property located at 1902 Baritoland Drive in the City of Madison to provide city with the both short-term and long-term option to address homelessness. Recommended action is addition referred to Equal Opportunity Commission on October 14th. Next is legislative, agenda item 72, legislative file number 6742, to authorizing the city's execution of a purchase and sale agreement between the City of Madison and B I P Enterprises LLC or their successor and assigns for the purchase of the property located at 2002 Thia Road. In the City of Madison for use as a temporary man shelter and as a long-term site for redevelopment. Recommended action is additional referred to Equal Opportunities Commission on October 14th. Additional agenda item with recommendation made from the floor. Agenda file number 23, legislative file number 66949, amending section 33.134 of Madison General Ordinance to revise the jurisdiction of Common Council Executive Committee. Recommendation is from the Common Council Executive Committee to place on the file without prejudice. Agenda item 24, legislative file number 67061, amending section 2.01 and 2.15 for Madison General Ordinance is to clarify the process of designating a location and the means of conducting individual common council meeting. Recommended action is to refer to next C C E C meeting. An item introduced from the floor for referral, legislative file number 67415, providing Patterson and Richardson Properties LLC a $250,000 loan to purchase a commercial property at 550 Grand Canyon Drive through the Commercial Ownership Assistant Program. And recommended action is referred to Finance Committee on September 27th.
And in addition, we have registrants on items 22, 23, 27, 46 and 55. I'll read that again, 22, 23, 27, 46 and 55. Are there any additional exclusions requested by members of the council? Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to object to the referral, the additional referral on items number 66 and 72.
66 and 72, all right. So we'll separate those items for a vote on the referral.
Thank you.
Alder Bennett, was your hand up? No. All right. Are there any other exclusions requested? Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on the consent agenda? Or anything else on the consent agenda? Seeing none, let me go through that one more time, just so we're all on the same page. Items, oh, Alder Vedever, go ahead.
Apologies, I just need to disclose that on item 69, that I am an employee of the Wisconsin Department of Health Services.
Thank you, Alder. So noted. All right, so items six, nine and 10 are hearings. We'll record unanimous vote on the following extra majority items, 28, 37, 38, 39, 40, 42, 43 and 44. With a special note that the recommendation on items 38, 39 and 40 is to approve. 27 is separated, 46 is separated. 24 has the recommendation, item 24 will be referred to the next C C E C meeting. And the introduction from the floor, Legis 67415, will be referred to the Finance Committee. And items 22, 23, 27, 46 and 55 will be excluded from the consent agenda. Right. Any additional on the consent agenda? All right, so then on items 66 and 72, the motion is to add referral to Equal Opportunities Commission on 1014. Let's just, to be official about that, let's take a separate motion, President Abbas, on that, on just the referral on those two items.
So the motion will be the...
To refer.
To refer.
To add, excuse me, to add an additional referral to E O C.
Okay. And we have to do separate on each?
Yes, because there's, I think we can do them together, but there's been an objection to the referral.
Okay. Move motion to referral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded to add that Equal Opportunities Commission is referral on items 66 and 72. Is there any questions or discussion? Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I objected to this additional referral is this item will be going to the Finance Committee and the City-County Homeless Issues Committee. Time is of the essence to purchase these properties. As I think we all know here, we have some very serious issues with homelessness in our city. And these facilities getting purchased as quickly as possible is incredibly important. I believe that, you know, this going to Finance Committee as well as the City-County Homeless Issues Committee certainly gives the community plenty of opportunity to discuss this issue. I ask and request if the clerk's office can invite members of E O C to either the City-County Homeless Issues Committee and Finance Committee and let them know it's taking place if they wish to participate in that conversation, those committee members, they certainly should be invited. But we need to get moving on this and not push it out from what would be our next council meeting to the following. So that's why I object. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett.
I don't have much to add to that. Keith said it, which, or it was already said what I was going to say. This purchasing of Thia Road and other, and the other location have been such a belabor point that we all have made over and over again. As a member of E O C, I believe that E O C members would like to push this forward as fast as possible. as fast as possible so that we can, um, help our communities, um, and help the houses community. So, um, I, yes, I agree with this motion.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would like to have the E O C weigh in on this, um, purchase of, uh, Zire Road on the impact of, weigh in on the impact of moving our, uh, residents of the homeless shelter yet again before we get them to the permanent location that we've been so, um, actively trying to find.
Thank you, Alder. And so the motion is to, uh, add the referral. Oh, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, the reason that I'm weighing in is is that, um, with such a concern with where, um, our, um, the, the homeless population of those unhoused population is going to land, um, they are already, um, in a location and to move them yet again. Um, I'm just wondering if this move, um, is toward, um, will they be moved yet again if they're moved to the Zire Road? Um, there is an excellent, um, video provided by Catholic Charities of what, um, a purpose-built shelter is for, um, and I will be forwarding that out to, uh, all the alders, uh, but the concept is to get a purpose-built shelter.
Ma- Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, point of order. We're, we're, we're talking about an intro- a referral and, and she's going into the detail of the legislation and it's just being introduced. So I'd, I'd prefer, um, that we focus on the referral and, and not, uh, dive deep into the, uh, issue if possible.
Well, a, a point of order, a point of order.
Alders, Alders.
A point of order, please.
Uh, yeah, so...
That is my point of order.
Uh, Alder Furman is correct. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, the, the motion is only regarding referral, uh, but I'll allow you to continue.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, the point of order is the challenge of the referral.
I, I'm sorry, Alder.
Uh, the challenge of the referral to, uh, E O C.
Alder, that's about, what we're about to vote on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole on the referral.
I, um, definitely support, um, the, the decision not to send this to E O C. Um, like Keith mentioned, or Alder Furman and Alder Bennett, time is of the essence. We, we already knew this time was coming. There's a lot of things playing at play here. We have been talking about this for months. We know we have, um, multiple, um, other activities happening in the current location of the shelter, and I really don't want to be into a position of repining one project versus the other. They're both important, so the sooner we can move into, into, um, finalizing this process, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Carter.
I just want to make a, a comment, and this has to do with the referrals, so no one needs to do point of order. When we talk about the volunteers of the, on the commission of the E O C can attend another meeting to find, to weigh in at another committee meeting, I think is very unfair. We talk about our volunteers, and they are volunteers, because at this point, we don't pay people to be on our committees, commissions, and boards. To have to go to another meeting, I just think that to have to go to someone else, another committee meeting to weigh in, I think that it should go to the E O C. It has gone in the past to the E O C. We should never hinder the public from being able to voice their opinion on as many levels that we can offer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to speak to the fact of, um, looking at the composition of the city county homeless issues commit- committee. Know that there are city and county staff that work within homeless services, the provision of grants on a daily basis. There are government officials from both the council and the county board, as well as those with lived experience. I totally understand, especially in the age of virtual working, no one wants to go to multiple back-to-back meetings, but I feel like, uh, the folks that you have committed or appointed to that committee are able and willing to speak to that based on both lived and work experience. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Alder Curry, Alder Benford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to piggyback on some of the comments real quickly, I'm, uh, one of the alders along with Alder Bennett that serves on the E O C. And to Alder Curry's point, there's some synergy. I also serve on the city county homeless issues committee. I, I agree with Alder Furman, the intent of this is let's not delay this, that, uh, I can't speak collectively for the whole E O C, but as one of the other alders, I can tell you that, uh, folks on that commission would want to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Benford. All right, so the motion is to add the additional referral to the equal opportunities commission. Um, uh, so all those in favor of adding E O C as a referral, uh, will say aye. Those opposed to adding E O C as a referral will say nay, as your name is called, Alder Carter. Uh, you're muted, Alder.
It can sixty-six and seventy-two at the same time so that we can vote once?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Alder Carter, for clarifying that. Uh, the, the motion is to add the additional referral to both items sixty-six and seventy-two. So, uh, an aye vote is to add the referral to E O C, a nay vote is not to add the referral to E O C and to continue with the existing referrals. All those in favor, aye. Uh, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Benford?
No.
No. Alder Bennett?
No.
No. Alder Carter?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
No.
No. Alder Curry?
No.
No. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Alder Figaro Cole?
No.
No. Alder Foster?
No.
No. Alder Furman?
No.
No. Alder Halver- Halverson?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney? I apologize, Alder Harrington McKinney, I believe you're muted still. Aye. Alder Heck?
No.
No. Alder Lemmer?
No.
No. Vice President Martin?
No.
No. Alder Meati?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vervier?
No.
No. Alder Vidavir?
No.
No. Alder Wahili?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Aboras?
No.
No. And President Abbas? And with fifteen noes, I believe the noes have it, Madam Mayor. Thank you. All right, so we're back to the consent agenda then, uh, and I will go over one more time what we've got. Uh, items six, nine, and ten are hearings. Will record a unanimous vote on the following extra majority items, twenty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four. Um, on item twenty-four, the motion is to refer back to C C E C. And, uh, the introduction from the floor, legisstar, legisstar six seven four one five, uh, will be referred to finance committee. And the following items will be excluded from the consent agenda, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-seven, forty-six, and fifty-five. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, uh, just for clarity's purpose, uh, President Abbas, let's get a motion on all of that.
Move motion to both.
Second.
All right, the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and the recommendations therein. And, uh, we will go to item six, which is legisstar six seven zero zero one, the twenty-twenty-two executive capital budget. Uh, we have, uh, excuse me, I'll open a public hearing. We have no registrants on item six. I will recess the public hearing. President Abbas, a motion to refer back to the finance committee?
Move motion to refer back to finance committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer to the finance committee. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred back to the finance committee. That takes us to item nine, which is legisstar six six eight eight eight. I'm very pleased to submit to you the appointment of Norman D. Davis for confirmation of another five-year term as our director of civil rights. President Abbas, a motion?
Yes, uh, move motion to, uh, for the appointment of Norman D. Davis for confirmation of a five-year terms as a civil rights director.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Norm is with us. Uh, are there any questions for Norm? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Congratulations, Norm, and thank you for signing on for another five years.
Thank you all so much.
Right, that takes us to item ten, legisstar six seven zero eight seven. I am equally delighted to, uh, submit to you the appointment of Mary Beth Whittlebell for confirmation of another five-year term as our fantastic city clerk. President Abbas?
Yes, move motion, uh, to appoint, appointment of Mary Beth Whittlebell for confirmation of, of five-year terms as a city clerk.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, Mary Beth, as you know, is with us. Are there any questions for our fantastic clerk? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of confirmation? Seeing no objection, we will record that vote. Congratulations, Mary Beth, and thank you very much for signing up for another term.
Thank you.
All right. That will take us to, uh, item number twenty-two. And give me a moment to get to all the right pages here. All right, item number twenty-two is legisstar six five five two seven, establishing purpose-built full-time men's shelter search criteria. We have, uh, registrants on this item. The one registrant wishing to speak is Bob Schaefer from District Seventeen. Do we have Bob with us?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, I very much, uh, support the continued, um, uh, looking, you know, into the potential, um, permanent men's home shelters that, on my understanding, are currently being looked at, uh, closer to the area of the services, uh, that are mostly downtown. Um, so I just want to lend my support to that. And I also have a comment, uh, to make on, uh, agenda item number seventy-two, uh, which has been put into the...
Mr. Schaefer, we've already adopted agenda item seventy-two, and you weren't registered on that?
Well, the, the collective in the matter is, Madam Mayor, is that I tried to register on it, but it will not let me register on it.
Because it's, it's up for, uh, introduction?
Okay, but yeah.
Mr. Schaefer, so you can't register on items or speak to them, um, as they're up for only introduction? You'll have an opportunity to speak to them at future meetings.
Okay.
Do you have anything else on item twenty-two?
Uh, no, I just wanted to be, speak in behalf of, uh, uh, supporting that, uh, because I think that's very essential, uh, for helping, uh, our homeless people and helping the people who need to have, uh, the services that, uh, can be provided, uh, and as a, as a plan is, uh, working to address.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our registrant? All right, seeing none then on item twenty-two, uh, President Abbas, a motion?
A motion to place on file.
Second.
Right, it's moved and seconded to place on file. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of placing on file? Alder Halverson?
Uh, I, I will object, I, I'll vote no on that.
We'll record, uh, Alder Halverson as a no vote on this item. Alder Carter?
Um, mine is a no vote also, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Uh, so we'll record, uh, an eighteen to two vote with Alders Halverson and Carter, uh, being recorded as voting no. Is there any objection to that being the result here? All right, seeing none, it's a eighteen ayes, uh, to place on file and two noes. Uh, so the item is placed on file. All right, so that take us to item number twenty-three, uh, which is legisstar six six nine four nine, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to revise the jurisdiction of the common council executive committee. We have a one registrant wishing to speak on this item, Anquita Bahadwaj of District Fourteen. Is Anquita with us?
Uh, Anquita, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. Again, Anquita, you should have a prompt to unmute, I can't unmute you myself.
Maybe hiding under another window?
There it is. Oh. And, yep. You were unmuted and disappeared. Um, and back again.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to say I speak only on my behalf. Uh, one argument on this matter that I heard earlier today is that, uh, there are too many venues to express opinions for the public. I just want to know, uh, why we need limits on discussion and input from the public? Like, that's literally fascism. You would want more public input, not less of it. That makes no sense. Um, secondly, Keith himself said, great discussions have come out of this in regards to C C E C. Then why take that avenue from the public? Either he's lying or doesn't mean what he is saying, or he's not good at, good at his first language. The third one is Madison has a brown Muslim immigrant for probably the first time as the president of city council. Now, very, very importantly, as Alder Wahili said earlier today at C C E C, this is intimidation directed towards a Muslim immigrant, and I want to validate it, as both the Muslim immigrants on the council feel that way, and both of them happen to be from third-world black and brown countries. The left always says, believe the victims. We must believe the victims here too. That is, if the left wants to practice what it preaches and not engage in posturing and hypocrisy. If I'm not wrong, just a few months ago, y'all were like, we don't want to meddle in T C O B business and respect what we decided and what we want. But now y'all are taking a decision not on just our behalf, but also on behalf of so many other boards and committees. Again, politics here is too flimsy, my cat can tell. And at last, these constant attacks on Muslims from third-world countries is not, not a novel idea for Americans, I get that. But have some shame and at least try to be classy about it. Maybe at least add a little bit of spice of Western saving. Maybe at least add a little bit of spice of Western saviorism in it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none then, President Abbas, a motion on item 23?
Motion is placed on file without prejudice.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to propose a substitute motion to refer this to the Common Council meeting of October 19th.
Is there a second to refer to the... Alder Figaro Cole will second to refer to the October 19th Common Council meeting?
That's correct.
Would you like to speak to the motion, Alder?
I'd like there to be a council discussion about this. I think the temperature was pretty, pretty high at CCEC, a lot of personal attacks. I don't wish to engage in that again this evening or have people engage on that towards me. And do believe also there's an opportunity to possibly have a compromise between now and then. So I would like the council to discuss this on October 19th, please.
All right, Alder Figaro Cole?
Can I speak on this real quick or not?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to be very, very clear. I'm a sponsor of this resolution, and I'm coming from the perspective of processes. I may be, you know, one of the newest people on the council here, and I may be naive, but my understanding of the processes are that we are a group of 20 people that depend on committees and boards that are made of experts, and they have their own expertise in particular subjects. So we use them as a resource for us to make decisions. So when I have, when we have something related to zoning, for example, that should be going to someone that has expertise on zoning. Out of the 20 of us, I'm sure that Heck is the expert on that, but not all 20 of us are the experts on it. So I, in my mind, process-based, that should go, that should be contained to the people that know their stuff about zoning. We're talking about homeless issues that should go to the homeless committee. We're talking about employee relationships or whatever that should go to the Employee Relationship Committee, and so on, and so on. These, as discussed in the earlier meeting, perhaps there is a, there's not a clear understanding what the CCEC is supposed to be doing, but in my mind, in my personal opinion, I thought that that was a committee that, that was meant to manage council issues or council business or council processes or the staff processes. I didn't realize that it was even called the President's Committee. I don't even know what that means. So to me, to me, for, to me, that is my motivation to be, to be a sponsor on this, on this resolution or order of change because process-wise and logically-wise, it makes sense. We are not, none of us are experts on everything, and that's why we have committees for people that have to help us make these processes work for us. So all this discussion that we, that happened on the prior committee and that, I mean, I have to say, I'm disturbed. I'm, I'm as shocked as Alder Evers was mentioning earlier. Like, we are, we are putting race into this. It's really like, I mean, I don't even know where to begin with that. Because again, I am looking at this from the point of process, and I get the point that perhaps it should have come up to have more discussions with other people, and that didn't happen. But we are here, and the same discussions that we, if we were, if people here were so upset about these topics, instead of demanding for one Alder to come to you, you should have just picked up the phone and go to that Alder and discuss it with them on a one-to-one basis and not just at the display that we had just a few, an hour ago. So I want to make it very clear, this is not racial motivated whatsoever, and I mean, you can think whatever you want, but from my perspective, and I also know from Alder Furman's perspective, this is about processes. And we need better processes on this organization that we're trying to, to work with. Nobody can deny that we need better processes. So I definitely, I will definitely encourage a discussion of the whole committees, of the whole, you know, among ourselves on the next meeting. So I will, I will support moving it into the next meeting.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to this referral, I would just encourage my colleagues to support this. And for those who have trepidations or even strong feelings against it, I think it's worth the opportunity to see if a compromise progress can be made. And if you're not happy with where it ends up on the 19th of October, you could, you'll certainly have the opportunity to have the discussion and vote as you like at that point, but I think it's worth exploring. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wahili?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Figaro Cole talked about process, and for every item that has to be done, it has to go through process. This item agenda did not go through process. I served on the TFOC committee. Alder Furman did not talk about this. And, you know, he talked about the challenges of referral. We are working on referral process. We are committed to making better for BCC. This is a big holistic change that we can make for the BCC and the position that the CCEC can take. Process is something that we really are, you know, we need. And that's not the way that it should be. The way I see Alder Furman take this matter is an attack on the leadership of the CCEC. He did not talk to Alder Abbas, talking about asking him how we can make and modify the CCEC committee. Not having a conversation, not having a conversation with the TFOC, that's taking the matter in his own hand in terms of biases. And that's why I will not be voting for this. I don't mind having a compromise. I don't have, having a compromise in how we refer items to the BCC. We can, we can streamline, and everyone would like that. But to attack the CCEC and attack the CCEC leadership is, I think, intimidation. And I'm repeating that again. It's an intimidation. Thank you.
Alder, President Abbas?
Our Alders are allowed to direct comments directly towards other Alders.
On Alder Bennett's point of procedure, Alders should direct their comments to the chair. It is, you are allowed to speak about other Alders, but I just remind us all to be as cordial and respectful as possible. But you are technically, under Robert's rules, supposed to direct your comments to the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. President Abbas?
So I will not support this refer. I'm not against finding a compromise, perhaps, but the fundamental, the baseline of this particular ordinance is absolutely express no collaboration. Regarding if we talk as a council about collaboration, if I introduce a resolution and ordinance, I reach out to the Alders. I reach out to that committee, whatever the situation, whoever is impacted, or discuss that agenda item. The doors are always open. If the collaboration, I'm all up for that, might be we find a compromise. We could find a compromise going back on the table and reevaluate the work of CCEC. I'm happy to bring that as a discussion item. Promise to do that. I can bring that on CCEC agenda item and discuss about what roles we could play, what, what are the shortcomings, what are the things we could achieve altogether. And also happy to work with other Alders or either with TFOC members to figure it out about referral structure because the TFOC report clearly expressed about all the BCCs, not handpicked CCEC. So I'm happy to do that and I'm happy to collaborate, but referring this, again, the baseline of this particular ordinance is absolutely wrong, and I feel like it's definitely a political move rather than perhaps if the good intentions are there, so let's put them on place on the file, and I'm happy to work with Alder Furman as well and see how can we collaborate. Thanks.
President Abbas, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting this as well. And these are the reasons why. As is that I've served on the Executive Committee before, and I've seen the body work collaboratively together on some very critically challenging issues, but they work together. And in this instance, there was no collaboration, there was no working together. And let me just lift this up. It is, it seems to me that when there is, except for former Alder Shigba Badar, when there is an instance where a person of color comes into leadership, there is a challenge. And I absolutely believe in process. The reason that, and this is one of the things I agree with Alder Figaro Cole, the reason that we have so much discord is that there is not a process. We use process very fleetingly, and the process works when it's in our favor, and when it's not in our favor, we throw it out. We will continue to have these loggerheads if we don't look at the basis of how we do business and how we conduct business as a council. And I think that this isn't, there is definitely a need to look at how we make referrals, and that is housed, I thought, in the TFOC Implementation Committee. That's where that discussion is hashed out, that's where that collaboration is. And as the Chair of the Implementation Task Implementation Committee, you know, I would, I would ask that that be on our agenda and we hash this out. I'm not going to vote to re-refer it because we have not, we have not looked at it and made some recommendations, so we can bring it to the body for consideration. Having it come to the body for a vote before doing that thorough consideration, I think, is putting the cart before the horse, and I will not be voting and supporting that. However, I do support the concept, and there needs to be that process concept, but I think that moving it forward and having it be voted on is premature. And to the question of, has Alders been challenged and insulted on the floor before? Absolutely. And I stand to say that there are Alders who have been guilty of that attack. And so I will not be supporting this and moving it forward. And I hope that you would reconsider that it needs more work so that when it comes before you, we can have an intelligent discussion of whether this works or whether it does not work. But at this point, it's not fine-tuned enough.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would agree with Alder Harrington McKinney that it is not fine-tuned enough, and that is why I support referring to the October 19th meeting for that very purpose, for the very purpose of trying to achieve some kind of consensus and understanding, realizing that we're all in this together. The mayor starts our meetings every week with reminder to essentially to assume goodwill, to put aside our differences. Now, one can always do better at this job. One can always be more collaborative. But it's incumbent upon us to, when a proposal is put forth, to debate the merits of the proposal, not how the proposal came forward. To debate the proposal as so. Don't criticize the means by which you came back and assume nefarious intent or discriminatory intent or racial motivations or, or, you know, some kind of animus or an attack. Debate the merits of the proposal. We're not going to debate that tonight, although we're starting to. I think that I agree with, with Alder Harrington McKinney and others that delaying this, letting temperatures calm down, not attacking one another, assuming goodwill, realizing that we're all in this together, and if we are going to heal the differences and the discord that's in this body, having a timeout like this is certainly appropriate so that we can come together and work together and collaborate. And that's why I support referrals, so giving hope to that peacemaking process, knowing that, yes, we're all God's children and that we can work together for the good of the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Yes, I support the previous comments made. Honestly, I'm not really going to try to debate whether or not we want to change CCEC right now because I do believe that we should refer this out for the very reasons that there needs to be more discussion about it, for the very reasons that we should be promoting compromise, intelligent conversations, et cetera, et cetera. And I really hope that moving forward, we can step away from this pissing match between two Alders and it doesn't become a thing where if one person votes one way, then they're taking one side or the other. As one of the Alders pointed out in the previous meeting, attacking the person and not the argument is an ad hominem fallacy. Something, it's a very basic rule of debate to understand how, like, attacking, when you attack the person and not the argument, then the argument is lost entirely in some personal debate. And that's not what this is. This is where trying to put forward what is best for the structure of CCEC and council and best for advocacy moving forward. So I hope that moving forward, and I hope that we can refer this so that we can continue that and we can have a more collaborative and kind process.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin?
I'd like to call the question.
Alder, there's only one other Alder in the queue.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Figaro Cole will pass. That's, that's okay, Alder? Yes, all right. So then we're, we're at the question. The motion, the substitute motion is to refer to the 1019 council meeting. I sense a roll call is required. So all those in favor of referral, aye. Those opposed to referral, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Binford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Carter?
No.
No. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Halverson?
No.
No. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Limer?
Aye.
Aye. Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Mayadi?
No.
No. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vidavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wahili?
Wahili?
No. Alder Aboras?
Yes.
Aye. And President Abbas?
No.
Madam Mayor, I have 14 in favor and 6 against. The ayes have it.
Thank you. With 14 ayes, that motion is, or that item is referred to the 1019 council meeting. And we will move on to item 27. We have registrants wishing to speak on item 27. So, let's see, first, item 27 is Legis 66091, a resolution to provide a plan for wage increase parity to general municipal employees. On that item, our first registrant is Kevin Gunlock of District 13. On that item, our first registrant is Kevin Gunlock of District 13, representing the South Central Federation of Labor, to be followed by Neil Rainford.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, City Council, for having me speak. I'm speaking in support of Agenda Item 27, Legisstar 66091, to bring the wage increases for all city workers to parity with protective service employees by January 2024. Wage increase equity is a fundamental issue that workers through their unions have always strived for. There's a reason for this, and I'm just going to give you my own personal experience with it. 28 years ago and prior to this current position I hold, I became a county worker and a union member. I was mentored by a workforce and union membership that consisted of 90% women and 70% people of color and recent arrivals from every continent but Antarctica. For the 18 years with the county, we knew that wage increase equity was a basic, fundamental standard we always stood for. And it was for good reason. Before that, local government, union job within other diverse workplaces that we had worked in, we had witnessed a lot of favoritism, discrimination, retaliation when it came to a host of issues, including wages and wage increases. Some workers or departments received wage increases while others received less or none at all. And it was rampant. And there was little or no recourse for us to prevent it. In fact, when workers did attempt to confront these issues, there was oftentimes retaliation. And I faced some of that, standing up for myself as well as some of my coworkers in those non-union, non-governmental jobs. And then came the union job. We realized we no longer had to fight alone. We no longer had to stand alone. We no longer had to see higher wage increases for some and not others. And we had what we call the Me Too clause that was honored by local government. We not only saw unions as providing a democratic avenue for fairness, but also county and local government committed to a democratic process for fairness and equity, including when it came to wage increases. And this is the right thing to do. And frankly, I think it's an example for the rest of our community to follow within all workplaces. So I just want to thank the cosponsors of this resolution for those who vote for it as well. And I encourage all of you to vote for this wage increase equity for all of our city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Neil Rainford of Nob Hill Road, representing the Municipal Employees Union Local 6000, to be followed by Dan Rolfs.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Neil Rainford and I represent the City of Madison, General Municipal Employees Local 6000 and AFSMI Council 32. And seek your support this evening for the alternate resolution, which differs from the original resolution in a couple of important ways. The first is that it provides for a Me Too provision that the parties have long used, going back to 2015. And this will ensure that further wage inequity does not occur over the next several years. But only the provision, the alternate, really provides for that sort of equity to occur in the coming years. The second main difference is that it also ensures that wage equity will continue and that there wouldn't be an opportunity to step, to set it aside in case there was determination that furloughs or layoffs may be warranted. Thirdly, the council did advance a direction to the administration and to its employees to find a resolution by 2024. And only the alternate resolution does that by culminating the structure of the wage equity by 2024, not by the middle of 2024 as the base resolution does, which is essentially half a year too late. So with that, I would call on you to remember the great work that this body did in the wake of Act 10, ensuring that those employees who were harmed by Act 10 as well as those employees who were, you know, kept whole by Act 10, still have the capacity for equitable treatment before the city and its administration and encourage your support for the alternate this evening. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Rolfs of District 6, representing Mepsi, to be followed by Walt Jackson.
Mayor, I do not see Dan in the queue.
All right. Then Walt Jackson of Stoughton, representing the AFSMI Local 6000.
Good evening, elected officials, department heads, fellow educators, advocates and agitators, City of Madison employees. My name is Walt Jackson, Vice President of Local 6000, also appointed member of the State of Wisconsin Group Insurance Board and tonight, appointed member of the Planning Commission in the Town of Dunn. I'm here tonight talking to you primarily regarding health insurance. I have sent Alders this just recently now, two tables, last year's rates and this year's rates, followed with another table which breaks down the percentage of total enrollment of city employees and what insurance plan people are in. For instance, I will share just my own experience with belonging to quartz and having the family plan. Quartz Family Plan will be going up $67.29 a month from this year. With my 1% increase in girls' wages, which is proposed in the alternate, which I do support, it's roughly $0.31 an hour raise increase for myself. However, that will be an $807.48 increase in my health insurance premium. My 1% increase in wages will only be roughly $625. So as you can see, the 1% that is proposed will not even cover my increase for this year, let alone the $14.35 monthly increase in health insurance I had last year. So it's very critical that the wage equity parity resolution that's in front of you is voted on tonight. We won't be able to catch up this year or even the following year. But the following year, we should be hopefully breaking even and hopefully going a little bit further ahead to cover the increases that will come not only this year for next year in health insurance, but for the following years as well. So I want to thank you all again in sponsoring alternate resolution item that's in front of you tonight. And thank you again for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have Dan Rolfs now.
Dan, you should be able to unmute yourself as a panelist.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. But we're getting a echo on you. Let me try again, Dan.
How about now?
You're still echoing, but we can hear you.
Are you on more than one device?
Is that better?
Yes.
My apologies for the oversight. Again, thank you. I'm here in my capacity as a citizen, representing the Madison Professional and Supervisory Employee Association. My apologies for the technological issues. First, thank you very much to folks for our sponsoring and supporting the alternate as amended. We appreciate your support for this item. It's critical to move wage equity and wage parity forward for general municipal employees, as previous speakers have outlined. You have many other things on your agenda, so I'll try to keep my comments short. So support for wage parity is critical. All of the things that policymakers want to have happen, from building inspection to code enforcement to bridges designed and built and libraries staffed and all of those things. They take two sides of a budget. They take capital and they take operating. Capital items are fun and great to talk about. It's always exciting to go to a groundbreaking and a ribbon cutting and those things to have a new this or that. But those things only happen with staff as well. And that's where the operating piece comes in. So part of that operating portion is having wage parity. The resolution that you see in front of you, that the amended alternate moves that forward as directed by the council and supports the efforts that the staff that you see and interact with on a daily basis and makes their, makes their lives a little bit easier and helps them pay their bills and put food on their table. So thank you again for your support. I'm happy to answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you. We have no other registrants wishing to speak. So are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Evers?
I have questions for Dan. Dan, in previous testimony, you've mentioned the importance of morale from an employee standpoint. Could you comment on that a bit further, please?
Thank you for the question, Alder. Happy to answer that. Employee morale is not where it should be. It's employees, I, maybe a nice way to describe it is in the Lord of the Rings, they ask Bilbo how he feels at the end of his life and he says he feels like butter scraped over too much toast. That's probably a reasonable description for an awful lot of staff. There's just, there's too much toast and not enough butter. And you try to spread your time around and to cover all of the items that you need to cover. And whether that's working on, you know, filing all of the, all of the time sheets that you need to file because quite frankly, the folks who cover a lot of our admin positions, all of our admin positions make the city run. To designing bridges or sanitary sewers or water or staffing those positions that do outreach to the community through, you know, working with folks to deal with Section 8 or any of those other things. The demands on all of those positions have only increased. One great example, I think, is in my time with the city, the city attorney's office. I don't believe it's added a new attorney, but I know for a fact that the amount of work that the city attorney's office faces has only gone up. And I believe that's true for an awful lot of places in the city where there's just more work and there's never enough resources. And we have been consistently asked to do more with less. And as I said in my testimony to the Finance Committee as well, we found some efficiencies. Obviously, the technology has changed and we're able to operate more efficiently in certain ways. But again, as I said at the Finance Committee, I can get 26 hours out of a day, but some days you need 28 or 30 or more. Again, I won't tell you where I get the extra two, but there are the vast majority of my colleagues who work at the city do the same thing. You know, they, they say the city, New York is a city that never sleeps. And with all the respect to the Big Apple and the Five Boroughs, I think Madison is the exact same way. There's always a city staff person working. There's always somebody sending emails, answering text messages, phone calls, writing reports, managing things that need to be done. And we're just reaching a point where we're being asked to do more than we have capacity to do from a bandwidth perspective. And we see our brothers and sisters in protective services being granted raises. And it's challenging to hear, as I said at the Finance Committee consistently, we need to do more with less. And again, as I noted there, we're reaching a point where we will need to do less with less if this continues. This is a great city. It's been my home for almost three decades, God help me, and I love it very much. My family's been here for over 120 years as well. And I wouldn't trade this place for the world. But it is critical if we're going to continue to have the city that we have, that we have staff who are educated, experienced professionals up and down the line from the admin perspective, the, like I referenced before, the admin clerk one, those folks who a lot of people in the public never see, they make the city run. They make sure that folks' time sheets are put in, that people get paid, the bills get paid. And they're being always asked to do more, cover more ground, set up more committees, cover more bases. The person who's the equipment operator two, who's out there in, you know, freezing cold weather, cracking open the street, trying to make sure that we've got water mains that are fixed. That's, that's critical work that you have to have experience, education, skill to do. And those are just a few of the things that all of us know that the city does. But the city doesn't run well without people who have that kind of experience and expertise. I'm the last person who should be operating some of the equipment that those folks have. But the folks who do use it do a great job and they do excellent work in making sure that they are compensated fairly for their hard, for their hard work is really critical. So again, I want to thank all the folks who agreed to sponsor this. I think it really sends a great message back to the folks who I represent and all the folks who are with the Coalition of General Municipal Employees and 6000, 236 and the MCAA, that our policymakers are concerned and do hear their concerns and their voices about this particular issue. So again, Alder Evers, thank you for your question and thank you to everyone for your service. I know public service is not easy and I appreciate your time.
Alder Evers, anything additional?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions for our registrants? If not, President Abbas, a motion?
Just give me one second, Madam Mayor. Move motion to adopt amended alternative resolution?
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt the amended alternate. Are there questions for staff? Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Attorney Haas. Attorney Haas, I've asked this question at multiple meetings, so you won't be surprised. How legally binding is this resolution?
I think Alder Furman, at the previous meeting, I said that it was, it would be binding as long as, or until a subsequent resolution superseded it. I guess I would caveat that with, with the point that the council still has to establish a budget and a budget that would accommodate the resolution. And so every year, the council passes a budget and as long as the budget funds, you know, is able to fund what is called for in the resolution, the resolution would continue. But the resolution doesn't bind a future council to pass a particular budget.
Okay, so yeah, so if we pass, so I'm clear. So if we pass this and we can't afford it, then in the budget, then we've, you know, passed a resolution that made us feel good. But, you know, it ends up being what it is.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Alder Evers, questions for staff?
Yes, first for Attorney Haas and then for Harper. And Attorney Haas, that would also go for the original resolution too, right? The one that set up a timetable. My colleague Alder Furman is making a distinction about the alternate, but the original motion that he put forth also does not bind the city in any particular way. The alternate simply changes the timeline. And I, it seems to me, Attorney Haas, that that statement that this is not binding, wouldn't that apply to the original as well?
Yes.
Well, thank you. And then if I may, Mayor, I have a follow-up question, or not a follow-up question, but a separate question for Harper.
Go ahead.
Harper, I asked Dan about morale. And as head of the city's human resources, can you speak about the importance of morale for our city employees?
Mayor, this is Greg Leifer-Harp, not in the meeting.
Go ahead, Greg.
Maybe I can address it. Alder, your question is, I think, an important one. Morale is very important, especially where we have civilian and sworn staff in fire and police. If sworn staff is getting an increase and civilians aren't, it causes resentment. There's no doubt about that. There's no doubt about that. I don't know from a budgetary standpoint how you address that, the financial end of it, as well as the emotional end of it. That is, I think that's a question for the policymakers to decide, but it will cause a morale problem.
Well, thank you. If I may follow up, Greg, regarding various classes of employees, the management class, is that called like Class 21, or what's the category referred to?
The Comp Group 21 is department heads, and Dan is speaking for Comp Groups 18 and 44, which are the professional supervisory employees.
Yeah, I guess I want to ask that because in department heads, which I think would fall under the rubric of management, do we ever, do their current contracts have guaranteed raises, or raises that are in some sense guaranteed within their contracts?
I'm going to venture an educated guess here. My understanding is the Comp Group 21 folks follow the Comp Group 18 increases.
That's correct, Alder. The contracts don't include guaranteed raises. The Comp Group 21 members only get a raise if other staff get a raise, and the amount of their raise is tied to a formula that's based on the amount of raises given to other staff.
So, Mayor, if you may clarify that for me and my colleagues or Greg, are you suggesting then that the general employees are only getting a 1% raise this next year, that management will also only get that 1% raise?
Alder, I actually think it might be less than that. I don't have the formula memorized, but finance staff might be able to better clarify that.
Yeah, I was under the impression that we have approved some contracts recently that included an annual raise of something like 2.6%. So anyways, I guess what I am trying to say, Greg, if you could speak to, if there's a difference in pay groups or employee categories and compensation groups in terms of how they get their raises, it sounds like what you're saying and you would agree with, that that can be divisive, that can create a morale problem within the city as a whole. So that Team City has some fissures and divisions in it as a result of this. Is that perhaps a reasonable assessment?
I think that people react emotionally concerning how they get paid and compensated. And if one group gets an increase and another group doesn't, it's going to cause some resentment.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alder Curry, questions for staff?
I don't have questions, more so comments, and I guess a question for you.
Go ahead, Alder. There's nobody else in the queue.
Knowing that this is a, the resolution in front of us is an amendment of an original resolution, can I move to adopt the original?
Yes, Alder, if you wanted to make a substitute motion, you could move to go back to any previous version, as long as you identify which one. Or you could move amendments to the text that's before you.
Okay, and then I'll wait for discussion for the other.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, the motion is to adopt the amended alternate. Is there discussion? Alder Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't speak up at the finance meeting when the alternate was before us, and I regret that, even though I know that this is not about me. But I did want to take an opportunity as the, one of the two Alders that sit on the Committee for Employee Relations to share with my colleagues what I learned about the history of the committee, what happened at the first CER meeting when we were discussing this resolution and the alternate specifically, as well as the composition of the Committee on Employee Relations. So this is kind of brought up, but I understand that the Committee on Employee Relations was created after Act 10 as a way to protect and allow municipal workers, those not represented, are able to collectively bargain for some type of rights regarding fair working conditions, wage, all the things. In that composition, there's three members who hold management positions, there's three members that are just resident members, then there's two Alders who serve, but they also have to be concurrently on Finance Committee. And then one member who will be a vote in tiebreak is the Human Resources Director. And so going back to, I don't know which month that was, but when CER met, this resolution was not successful in passing, but I believe the original was. And I apologize if I'm misstating that, but I do know that this alternate did not pass. And so Dan, Walt, Neil, and everyone else who has been sending emails, voicemails regarding their support, I totally understand, and I appreciate all your efforts. I remember being on the Capitol when Act 10 was first enacted and seeing all of that collective activism coming and taking my young children with me. I currently work for a nonprofit, and so I think I shared this in the CER too, that sometimes I struggle with my lenses. We lose funding, we lose a program, we lose a staff member, services are decreased, right? And scrambling to try to figure it out. And so within a municipality, I've heard this is the right thing to do. And yes, we do need to take into consideration that laws before us were enacted that stripped and severely impacted municipal workers who are not working in emergency response services' ability to bargain. I know we've also been getting a lot of communications about nurses at UW and needing to have a collective voice in terms of taking care of themselves. So my vote at the original CER meeting, my vote at the finance meeting was no to this alternative, and it's not that I don't think it's the right thing to do. It's not that I believe that we should build budgets on the backs of our municipal employees, but for the fact that I kind of equate my term as Alder, two-year to grad school. You get into something, you do it for a year, the second year you master, and then you graduate. When I was in graduate school, there were a lot of issues within my school that students actively organized around. But once you graduate and get a job, that's no longer your primary focus. And so knowing that we're heading into an election year in 2023, knowing that there may be folks stepping into roles that we are holding now in 2023, that may not be able to uphold the decision that we make tonight. I don't believe that it's any error or not intentional to have both the Alders who are, excuse me, sitting on this committee to be from Finance Committee, from bringing that perspective of what we learn in that body. So tonight, I am not in support of the alternative, and I honestly don't know what to do in terms of like an amendment. But I guess the last thing that I wanted to mention is just being deeply disturbed of so much emphasis being put on economics. It is very, very, very important, but also kind of going back to that nonprofit lens, raises, wage, not like looking into them and making sure that folks are getting paid according to their experience, but there are other ways to show appreciation as well. And to go to the extreme of some folks maybe getting ready to quit, like that to me is deeper issues and a reason why I wanted to sit on the Committee on Employee Relations. But if we're talking about process, that's another thing. And I think we saw an excerpt of that earlier when we were talking about the CCEC. And so again, thinking about process, thinking about being kind and fair to each other, and letting the things that come between or not agreeing on an issue really divide us on. The moral at hand or the story at hand right now is about city staff feeling valued, city staff being able to have the same rights that other city staff have. So that was a lot, and I don't know where I'm going with it. But I want our municipal employees to know that I greatly appreciate the work that you do. And I don't mean to have a joke or anything, but as a social worker, we hear about self-care all the time. So workplace boundaries, I know that I can commit to that too. So even as an Alder, I won't pick up my phone and text somebody at 2:00. So I would like to encourage my peers to do the same, because hearing someone say that they answer their emails and phones all time of the night, to me, is also an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion? Alder Hengt McKinney?
Madam Mayor, I just need a clarification of what's before us. Are we voting on the alternate? Is that?
Yes, Alder, the motion is to adopt the amended alternate.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt the amended alternate. Is there any? Alder Furman?
Mayor, I don't know if there's a need for a roll call. I just want to be recorded. No on the alternate. I can't support those terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. We'll make sure that we record Alder Furman as voting no on the amended alternate. So is there any objection to recording a vote of 19 ayes and one no? Seeing no objection, we'll record a vote of 19 ayes and one no on item 27. And we will move on to item 46. Give me a minute to get to the correct page. Item 46 is Legistar 66098, adopting the Odana Area Plan as a supplement to the Comprehensive Plan and directing staff to implement the recommendations contained in that plan. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Joe DePere of District 9.
Joe, you should have a prompt to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, and thank you all for all that you do. I really appreciate it. My name is Joe DePere. I'm the general manager at West Town Mall. I'd like to briefly offer some comments about the Odana Area Plan, and particularly the proposed official mapping component of that plan. The Odana Area Plan covers a wide area on the city's west side and includes the land that has been occupied by the West Town Mall for more than 50 years. One element of the plan includes a recommendation to amend the city's official map. This proposed amendment to the city's official map would place public street rights of way directly upon the West Town Mall property. There are serious legal implications associated with establishing public street rights of way on developed commercial property, and as currently proposed, doing so would impose severe limitations on our longstanding use of the mall property. Accordingly, we oppose the proposed official mapping of our property, and over the past several months, we have expressed our concerns to the city attorney's office and other city staff about this issue. We've also come to understand that the Odana Area Plan, if adopted, would not by itself result in a change to the city's official map. We understand, based on the communications with and representation made by city staff, that a change to the official map would require further council action at a later time. Therefore, while we still oppose the inclusion of official mapping recommendation on the Odana Area Plan, we'd prefer to work with the city moving forward to address that particular issue in a manner that respects the city's broader planning efforts, but also recognizing West Town Mall's continued right to lawfully use its property, not only for its own benefit, but also for the benefit of the communities it has been proud to serve during its decade-long history in Madison. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. We look forward to working with the city on these matters in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our registrant? All right, seeing none, then President Abbas, a motion on item 46.
Move motion to adopt as proposed added in September 16, Odana Area Park Staff Report. As per the park staff report, move adoption. The benefits.
Second. So moved and seconded, I just want to be clear, we're including the amendments as reflected in the staff memo. Are there any questions for staff? Alder Havelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions for staff regarding the official mapping that the registrant had referred to. Can you give an explanation on the thought process behind including official mapping recommendations in the plans?
Thank you, Mayor. Sure, Alder Havelson, I can, and also Ben Zellers is here with us this evening from the Planning Division and was heavily involved in leading this planning effort. So as many of you know who have been involved in committees reviewing the plan as it has worked its way through the approval process, you understand that the official map takes us one step further than many of our adopted plans in the city that simply show the alignment of future streets that are desired if and when an area were to evolve or develop. For instance, often, when we lay out neighborhood development plans on the city's periphery, we're looking at undeveloped areas largely owned by very large landowners, so sometimes 40 acres, sometimes 80 or 160 acres owned by a single property owner. And in those cases, we typically don't show strict alignments that we would recommend for official mapping, because we realize that when those property owners, those very large, property owners of large tracts of land move forward with the development, they may be able to take advantage of some flexibility in the exact alignment of those streets. And frankly, they're in control, working closely with the city on the alignment of streets. Now, as a contrast to that, when we look at the long-term, very significant potential evolution of an area like the area surrounding West Town Mall, we as a city need to work with property owners to set some predictability in these areas. They are owned by many, many property owners. Property owners like CBO, which you heard from this evening, own very large tracts of that land, but intermittently, other owners have land, you know, adjacent to and surrounding CBO properties. The change that we're envisioning for the West Town Mall area, which may happen in five years, may happen in 40 years, may happen incrementally, relies upon a predictable network of new streets in order to accommodate a significant amount of new growth in the future. And those streets are really the bones of what we think could be a new neighborhood. And as we've worked with our Plan Commission and our TPPB and other boards, committees, and commissions, they have supported the usage of the official map as a tool to lay out the most critical streets, most critical connections, to really provide the framework for a new neighborhood in this area and a vibrant mix of uses to really, really meet the potential that it can meet. We think that the official map actually benefits existing property owners as well, because it provides them with the certainty of where those key, critical future streets will be laid out in the future, and they can begin to take their long-term plans for either redevelopment or marketing of their properties, as it may be, with the knowledge that the streets will be located in those locations. And so again, it sets the foundation for the evolution of this area. This isn't the first time that the city will have used an official mapping tool, and I do want to reiterate that adoption of this plan does not officially map the streets. You're not making that action tonight. But in some recent planning efforts that we've moved forward with as a city, some of the feedback from the council, and especially from the Plan Commission, has been, you know, if we're going to officially map areas, if we're going to proactively rezone property, we need to have those discussions when the plan is ongoing, so that this doesn't come as a surprise to property owners when the city then takes a more significant action to officially map streets or to rezone property. And so this is the first example before the council this evening, where during the planning process itself and the plan that will hopefully be adopted this evening, the council will be... the the council will be signaling to area property owners that in the future, within the next several months, they should not be surprised if the city then enacts the official mapping of the most critical rights of way. And just to to show an image for those of you that may not have been involved in many of the committees reviewing this, this is the map in the plan that is really, I think, critical to the official mapping issue. This is the the greater West Town area. The planning area here is is surrounded in the red, the red line here. And you can see that in blue, we're showing the proposed future streets in light blue and in dark blue. And only the dark blue streets have been deemed as the most critical streets to one day connect through this area. And so they are designated in this plan as streets that the city feels should be officially mapped in the future in order to guarantee future rights of way in in those areas. They do not mean that streets will be constructed right away. In fact, we know that 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 will not be the case. But what an official map does is it precludes new buildings within that mapped future right of way. And so again, the the city is not immediately taking on the investment of of creating these new streets, nor are we taking property from private property owners at this time. We're simply laying out and and crystallizing that future street network and ensuring that property owners don't invest with with new buildings within that within that area so that we can provide that predictability for the many property owners within within an area like this. And I'll I'll stop sharing there and hopefully that was a a decent answer to that question, but happy to take any follow-ups. And again, Ben Zellers may want to weigh in as well with future questions.
That was very good. Could you could you bring that that image back up again? What is the difference between the dark blue and the light blue again?
Sorry, I remuted. So so the main difference between the light blue and the dark blue, the light blue streets are shown as future streets that that we think we will need at some point, but their location and their very existence isn't as critical as the darker blue streets. And so let's let's create, let's let's think about a hypothetical future example here. In the dark blue line areas, and I'll zoom in here in this area. If and when the city takes the next step of creating a change to our official map to basically map future rights of way in this area, at that time, property owners would be precluded from building additions, from pulling building permits within that mapped future right of way. That would not be the case for the light blue areas. And so this larger black area here is is basically the outline of the existing mall building today. And and what we did as staff after listening to some of the input from from CBO is we actually adjusted the location of these darker blue lines, moving them a little bit further away from the the eastern side of the mall here where CBO may want to do facade changes or small additions. We wanted to make sure that there's sufficient space for for small additions and certainly maintenance of the existing mall building, but not for major investments, major additions and and new buildings right in the future path of of what we hope to be a a future street. And so I think it's a it's a signal that the city is taking more seriously these critical connections, the darker blue streets, by actually officially mapping them and precluding investment, future investment within those future rights of way.
Okay, and we touched on a little bit, just another follow-up. What is the process then to officially map? What what does that look like?
Yeah, thank you. We've we've gone through that recently in the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan area. And we're still working on preparing an official mapping piece of legislation in the Oscar Meyer area as well for critical connections. So what that looks like, it comes to the it comes to the Plan Commission first for a recommendation to the council and then comes to the council for final approval. And it actually entails quite a bit of of staff work on the part of our our city engineering division in that city engineering staff create legal descriptions of the area to be officially mapped. And so it's it's a lot like a rezoning of property. You have a a legal description that comes to you for for final approval. And at that point, and this might be six, twelve months away or or even more. At that point, then, if the council were to adopt a change to the official map, these would become agreed-upon future rights of way. Not not even then would they become rights of way that we've been taking from the property owners, certainly not developing at this time. We would just be reserving these future rights of way for such time as as a more significant redevelopment occurs.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wohilahey, questions for staff?
Yes, Heather, thank you, Madam Mayor. Heather, can you bring back that map?
Yes. Sorry.
And I also have another question for the for Joe. So one of the clauses, you know, it says the Odana Road is planned to receive bus BRT service. Where will that in the map, where will the BRT service be placed?
Let me see if I can call on Ben Zellers to take over here. I believe he probably has other maps at the ready and can show that in more detail. It might be better seen on a different map.
Yes, I can open up a BRT map. Let me try to scroll through what I have open here. Got to open up a different file, my apologies.
While we wait, Madam Mayor, is it okay if I ask another question to Joe?
Go ahead.
Okay. Joe, you talked about the legal implication. Can you explain or elaborate more on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Aldo, you wanted to go back to the registrant.
Yes.
We're we're past questions for the registrant at this point.
Okay. Then is Tony Haas present?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I can ask him the same question that the Joe indicated that there's a legal implication. Can he elaborate on that and what that looks like for the city and for the residents?
Oh, Aldo, I would just say that there there has been some correspondence back and forth with the mall's owners and and their attorneys. It's our view, for the reasons that that Heather has explained, that this is, first of all, this decision tonight does not establish the official map for those streets. And that this is a a function that, you know, it it's outlined in the ordinances, I'm sorry, in the Wisconsin statutes, that the city has a right to establish official maps and eventually, you know, look at determining where, you know, where the right of way is. So our office has not been convinced that there's a legal issue with the council acting on this matter tonight.
Thank you, Tony Haas.
I can call up that map now if I can share my screen here. So you can see the the planned BRT system here. And the BRT route runs along Mineral Point Road, which is the northern edge of the planning area boundary. And so maybe mark this up to just point that out. So BRT through the planning area runs through this portion of Mineral Point. Odana Road is down here. And so that would not be impacted, the official mapping, one way or another would not really impact the the BRT as it runs through the planning area.
So is it fair to say that it will not be on Odana Road, the BRT?
The adopted locally preferred alternative shows the Mineral Point alignment.
Can you magnify the map, please? Thank you. And can you draw again how the BRT is passing through the Odana?
Sure. So the the stops that are in the Odana planning area include Rose Island, Grand Canyon, Westfield and High Point. And then it continues on past the planning area to to Junction. And then Odana Road is is this white line right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. My question is, is is there a way to go forward with this plan without having the official mapping of the streets around the mall?
Sure, I can I can take that one. So absolutely, there there is that way forward. That would be, if the council were to vote on that this evening, you know, staff could certainly remove any recommendation in the plan related to official mapping. I think we're, you know, we're working on experience from recent planning efforts and subsequent official mapping and also recommendations from the TPPB and and the Plan Commission to include those for the reasons I I stated before. But but absolutely, yes, that is an option for moving forward that the council can consider.
Okay, and then I want to be clear. So the the dark blue lines on the map are the ones that are projected to be the streets that they want to make further along down the road, not today, not tomorrow. We talk in twenty, thirty years from now. The dark blue lines are the ones that they project to to be roads on the map. Is that correct?
Let me just restate, so the the darker blue lines here are the ones that the plan recommends now for official mapping. The lighter blue streets are still important, but their exact alignment isn't deemed as important, as critical to moving forward. And so those streets are not recommended for official mapping.
Okay. And even if and when this is passed, there could still be changes made to the layout of the streets. Is that correct?
That is, that is definitely correct. Yes.
So this is just a general idea of what the city has in mind, but this is not permanent if we pass this.
That's correct. This is not clear legislation officially mapping these rights of way. There is still some flexibility in the exact alignment. But I would say that it is a strong signal on the part of the city that the city is saying, hey, these connections are critical. We expect to be officially mapping these in the in the foreseeable future.
Okay. All right, thank you, Heather.
Sure.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions for staff?
Yes, Heather, can you tell me, do are these mapping streets taking into consideration some of the newer outbuildings of West Town Mall?
Yes, I'll I'll look to Ben if there if there's any caveat to that or anything else that he would like to add. But, you know, as you can see in this picture here, all of the black blobs are basically the existing buildings. And we know that around West Town, there has been a lot of investment in recent years, decades, to those kind of the pad sites ringing the the mall itself. And so those should be reflected on this on this map as well.
Yeah, and just to quickly add to that, it looks like I can only annotate when I'm sharing my screen. But just to the kind of the right of the between between Gammon and Mineral Point labels, there are those kind of three black boxes. And then there's a vacant parcel that's that's right there. And there's a building going up there right now. So that's kind of the newest addition, in addition to the Von Mar store that's being constructed. So it, you know, avoids that that vacant parcel. And as you can see from this map, there are a number of outbuildings that have been been constructed along Gammon Road, Mineral Point Road. And and those are all are all shown and kind of avoided by the by this planned street network.
And, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to mention, and I don't know if this merits a different screen share, but just to kind of emphasize what Heather had said before as far as kind of preparing the area, and these being critical street connections to prepare the area for future growth. There are over a dozen property owners in this area that most people would consider to be West Town Mall. So all of these colors represent different property owners. Certainly, the far and away the leader is CBL with the main mall property. But as we looked at planning this area with, you know, the outbuildings, all the different property owners, the question comes up about, you know, what happens if this property owner wants to move ahead with something before everybody else does? How how would what they do fit in with what may happen in the future for the other properties? So this plan really tries to create that framework that everyone in this area can depend on as they look to move for move forward with potential redevelopment at different paces, depending on their needs as as property owners.
And 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 Ben, since you're showing this, thank you very much, by the way. Was there communication with all the property owners at that on the West Town parcel?
Well, CBL owns the all the stuff in blue. We reached out to Sarah Tidge, who owns all the properties in green. And then we did a couple of, you know, a planning area-wide mailings for all property owners within the Odana area, which is over two thousand, two thousand postcards to all property owners to talk about the the kickoff of the planning process, encourage them to sign up for future updates. And then sent a second notice to all property owners about the city's discussion of official mapping at the Plan Commission and discussion of potential proactive rezoning considerations as well at the Plan Commission. So that has been disseminated to all property owners, not not just the ones in this this portion of the planning area.
Okay. And then finally, can you go to the map where you're, there's looks like a new street going through Research Park?
Sure, let me see if I can find that in this compilation materials. Looks like this was an earlier presentation. So yeah, you can see Research Park Boulevard there to the right and have some officially mapped streets potentially for that area as well, although not quite as many certainly as the the mall area itself.
And is is that is right. The one that is the dark blue, both going north, I think it's north, south, and then the other one going east-west, is that going through existing properties right now or is that vacant land?
The portion over here is owned by the UW, Charmpany Farm. And so they don't have any immediate plans to to make any changes to that, so far as I know. Although Research Park, I think, would be interested in that that property if the UW itself were to give it up. And then And then this portion right here is vacant land.
Okay.
Right now, that's owned by Kuna, and we've spoken with Kuna as well.
Okay, so both of those are outside of Research Park, correct? Is that what you just said?
Yes, except for kind of this small corner right here that goes through a Research Park parcel.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? Right, I'm not seeing any questions for staff. Is there any discussion on item 46? Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the plan, including the mapping recommendations. I just wanted to speak real briefly around the official map process. I know a lot of my colleagues, this is kind of a new concept, and worked around with some of our earlier deliberations or with the previous council about this. But I very strongly support when we do these plans and we actually come up, I mean, that proposed street network is what we think makes the most sense. And the land use recommendations are integrally tied to that street network. You can't do land use planning without transportation planning. If we don't do the official mapping, I don't think we're doing ourselves any favors, and I don't think we're doing the property owners here any favors. If this is what we believe is the best way for this area to develop, and we're putting that in our plans, we should follow through with putting it in our official map. It really, it's great to see, actually, how this has provoked this conversation. And if anybody has any specific objections to the streets as are being proposed, we should be having a debate and a conversation about that. But simply not mapping it, again, is not going to do any of us any favors. If we don't map that, some of those big areas that are vacant right now, those property owners could actually move forward and put a brand-new building there. And while we technically would have the right to use eminent domain and take the building down and put the street where we wanted it, that would cost us a lot of money. And so I think it's good practice to, if we're going to take the time to do these plans, and we have confidence, especially in that priority street network as shown in dark blue, we really need to be clear about that for everyone involved, put it on the official map. And I think we've already gone really out of our way to not include any of those official mappings over the buildings themselves, which would be all right also, but just to really make sure to minimize any impact on those current property owners. So I would really encourage everybody to support the official mapping process. I think that was the direction that the previous council gave to planning staff, to really incorporate that as a part of our normal planning process going forward. I think it's great to see, and would ask everybody to support that on this plan and then plans moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Halbushen?
I just want to say that I can see how it could bring angst to the property owner, to the mall, having roads right through their buildings. And I think the distinction, we do absolutely need to plan for future roads that make sense, obviously, in order to develop in the future. However, I think the rub is between making an official map, which then, to your point, what my colleague had just mentioned, if the property owner sees a viable path forward for their revitalization of building a building that's going to go over the top of a proposed officially mapped road, and they can't do that, it is taking away the choice of the property owner to be able to become, maintain their viability for going forward. I think that's where the concern is. I don't think there's any problem with mapping it out in the light blue, saying this is where we want to get to. I think the concern is when we're saying we're going to officially map it and then make it so you cannot potentially build a development that would be imperative to your future growth or stability of the property owner. So that's where my concerns are on that.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion on the items? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption of item 46. And we will move on to item 55, which is Legisstar 67100, calling for a fair and fast union election for nurses at University of Wisconsin Health to ensure quality patient care. We have registrants on this item, starting with Alex Dudak from District 11, to be followed by Erin Singer.
Mayor, there is no Alex in the list, but Erin is here.
Right, so then Erin Singer from Middleton, to be followed by Kevin Gunlock.
Good evening. Thank you to all the Alders and Mayor Rhodes Conway for giving me the opportunity to address the council. My name is Erin Singer, and I'm a registered nurse at UW Hospital Operating Room with almost 20 years of service. I got into nursing because I wanted to help people and be part of the greater good, and that personal mission is what keeps me going every day. But it's become progressively harder and harder to do my job ever since management stopped recognizing our union in 2014. The whole field of hospitals changed. When UW nurses had our union, there was true collaboration between us and management, and we were part of the real decision-making process. Since then, the collaborative environment has completely gone away, and UW is run in a totally top-down manner. All decisions are made by those in the executive suite, without any input of those at the bedside and the front lines. That's become especially scary during this pandemic because there's been so many unknowns about this deadly virus. There's been little transparency from management, in particular around personal protective equipment and safety protocols. Staff have been left in the dark and in fear of getting infected and infecting our patients and loved ones. My wife and I still worry constantly about bringing COVID home to our kids. They're eight and nine years old. Now that UW is a non-union hospital, it seems like there's an oppositional atmosphere in which it feels like management views nurses as the enemy rather than trusted partners. We're simply a labor expense, which is easy pickings for cost-cutting. The administration has not only undermined our nurse-to-patient staffing ratios, but they've also reduced service and support employees and given us their duties. In addition, they've cut our pay for being on call and called back into work, which is a regular occurrence in the operating room. All these negative changes have resulted in highly experienced nurses leaving UW, which the administration has done little to address. Because we don't have enough staff at times, I've had to work 40 hours during the week, followed by 24 hours on-call on the weekends, followed by 40 hours the next week. Sometimes our days are 16 hours straight. UW nurses need to once again be regarded as valuable professionals by the administration. We must get back to that collective collaborative relationship we had when we were a union hospital so we can advocate effectively for safe staffing, patient safety, and schedules that allow us to take care of ourselves and our children. Please stand with us as we call on the UW HCA Board to hold a fair union election before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kevin Gunlock of District 13, representing the South Central Federation of Labor, to be followed by Delia Pertsborn.
Thank you, Mayor Rhodes Conway and City Council Alders. On behalf of the 80, 90 unions who represent tens of thousands of workers along with their families, I am speaking in support of Agenda Item 55, Resolution 67100. And by being in support of this resolution, what we're saying is we support a union voice for UW health nurses, and we're calling for a fair union election before the end of the year. It's been a long time with nurses having to take on some of the things they're taking on, especially under this pandemic. And it's time for UW Health to recognize these nurses who would like to be in a union. This is a critical resolution, and it's important for a myriad of reasons. Nurses, and in this case UW nurses, have been on the front lines of this pandemic for close to two years. They're caring for our community members, all while struggling against systemic problems at the UW, which you've already heard some about them. There's another problem. There's also a shortage of nurses, which is being aggravated by the pandemic. We know our future nurses want their voices heard in an organized fashion through the power of a union. And let's just think about statistics here. 77% of people the age of 18 to 34 have a favorable view of unions nationally. And I suspect that is even higher in Madison. That shortage that we're talking about, and the systemic problems that you've already heard just a little bit about at UW, that nurses are facing, that contribute to their stress, the answer to both of those is simple. Empower the nurses with a strong, independent union voice so they can advocate for themselves, they can advocate for their patients, they can feel safe with their families, and for each and one of us in our community. You know, it's not only practical, but it's a moral imperative for the UW Hospitals and Clinics Authority Board to work with our healthcare heroes. And that's what our nurses are, healthcare heroes who are on the front line, and to work with them without delay and without intimidation, which too often happens, to develop a fair union election process before the end of the year. And I mentioned this earlier when I spoke, I've had over 20 years' experience working with government, but those 20 years, many of them, the vast majority, were with nursing staff in various settings. I got to say, they provide compassionate care, unmatched expertise, and I know they save lives. And I've witnessed nurses back many years ago, holding the hands of dying patients, waiting for their loved ones and relatives to arrive. But today, under the pandemic, nurses have to hold countless hands. And one of their hands, they hold those that suffer, while the other hand, they have to hold up an iPad so that the patient can say their last goodbyes to loved ones. And it's apparent nurses are struggling with this extreme physical, mental, and emotional burnout. And having a voice, an organized voice, a union voice, is what our UW nurses are calling for. And it's time for UW hospital admin to answer that call, to honor that call. And it's time for UW Health to no longer needlessly hide behind Scott Walker's Act 10. We know UW Health could voluntarily recognize our nurses as a union and start negotiating immediately. Some foremost labor attorneys in the state have thoroughly reviewed current law, including Act 10, and determined conclusively that UW Health can voluntarily recognize the nurses' union. Let's make this clear. Act 10 simply removed the obligation to recognize the nurses' union. It does not prohibit voluntary recognition. And as the preeminent healthcare system, a taxpayer-supported nonprofit that utilizes city services, it's time for UW Health to do the right thing and validate what our nurses, our healthcare heroes, are calling for, to hold a fair and expedient union election and to recognize that union. So I want to just thank you to the cosponsors of this, as well as those who support it, and thank you for my time and your time.
Our next registrant is Delia Pertsborn of District 10, to be followed by Amanda Kling.
Hi, my name is Delia Pertsborn. I am a registered nurse on UW Hospital's inpatient hematology, oncology, bone marrow transplant, and palliative care unit. And I have over seven years of experience at UW. And personally, I have a deeply vested interest in the future of UW Hospital because that's where my own family receives care. So naturally, I want them to get the best care possible. But sadly, the pandemic has exposed and magnified problems that were already growing at UW for years, and we're now facing an incipient crisis on multiple levels. There's a serious breakdown of communication between upper management and those of us on the front lines. Even though UW Health made more than $425 million in pure profits over the past year and received $68 million in taxpayer bailouts, our staffing, safety protocols, personal protective equipment, and health benefits are woefully inadequate, with upper management often citing costs as being a barrier to these issues. Short staffing, to the point of unsafe patient conditions, is the new normal. And the people who have stayed are facing intense burnout and PTSD. Nursing staff all over the hospital, including my coworkers and my friends on my own unit who have been infected with COVID, on the job are not given paid administrative leave even when the genetic testing proves they contracted it from a patient. They have to use their own benefit time and face unknown cardiac and pulmonary damage for the rest of their lives. We are scolded when we do not have time to take a lunch break but are not given any resources or personnel to help us with our increased workloads. And if a mistake happens that leads to a bad patient outcome because of being overworked, we bear the moral injury, the guilt, and the legal ramifications alone. And attempts to make any meaningful improvements at the hospital quite literally take years. But we don't have years to wait. We need change now. I want UW to be amongst the best hospitals in the country with truly remarkable care, and that's why I'm here testifying tonight. The only way that nurses will be able to generate the change that we need to achieve better patient outcomes and be truly respected and listened to is with an independent union voice. The nurses at UW Hospital are some of the most resilient, smart, selfless, and kind people I've ever known. And I am tired of watching them be exploited and demoralized every day. Today, we need you to use your voice to take care of us. Please, for the interest of your constituents and your own loved ones in this area, vote to pass this resolution. Please fight alongside us to ensure that the UW HCA Board holds a fair union election before the end of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amanda Kling-Fitchburg, to be followed by Victoria Gutierrez.
Hello, good evening. My name is Amanda Klingy, and I am a registered nurse in the UW Health Orthopedics Department. I'd like to take a minute to thank Alders, Lemmer, and Heck, and the mayor, and all the other cosponsors for working to introduce this crucial resolution, supporting our efforts to win a union voice. I became a nurse because I love helping and supporting people through some of their toughest, most painful moments. It's so gratifying to see their medical condition and quality of life improve and know that I can make a difference during those moments. But UW Health nurses struggle to provide the kind of personalized care that our patients deserve. We're just so understaffed. Understaffing has been a dire problem for years, and the pandemic has transformed this issue into a full-blown crisis. For over a year and a half now, UW Health employees have been confronting the deadly virus every single day when we go into work, and constantly racked with worry, wondering if I'll bring it home to my husband, children, who are five and two, or their grandparents. But what made the experience and the worry even worse is the top-down approach the UW Health Administration has taken for running the hospital, which has become even more evident during COVID. It seems like they use business models to determine how to deploy resources, such as staffing, in the hospital. But I have a message to the UW Health Administration. We're taking care of living, breathing people, not manufacturing products. When we've continuously raised concerns about potentially unsafe staffing, the administration has said, "Thank you for bringing that to our attention," and it never gets solved. Which is why we need an independent union voice so that those of us at the bedside can have a strong role in decision-making about the quality of care for our patients. With a union, nurses will be able to sit down to negotiate a contract, which could improve staffing levels, require adequate personal protective equipment, expand paid time off so we could care for ourselves, invest in continuing education, and recruit and retain qualified nurses. There's so much burnout right now, and we need to care for our mental and physical well-being so we can stay in this profession we're devoted to. Wisconsin is facing 10,000 empty nursing positions by the end of this decade. And we need UW to work with the nurses to solve this shortage because we are the best experts in this topic. I'm proud of my job and my coworkers, but I want to be proud of my hospital. And that's what our efforts to form a union are about. To be proud once again, to say we work at UW Health. So I ask you to please pass this resolution and work alongside us to ensure we can have a fair election at UW by the end of the year.
Time. Add. That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Victoria Gutierrez of District 13, to be followed by Mary Jorgensen. Do we have Victoria? Do we have Victoria?
Victoria, I see you're on the phone. Looks like you're unmuted.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Gutierrez, and I'm a proud union nurse with SEIU Healthcare Wisconsin. I'm also a critical care nurse at Meriter Hospital. Especially this year, we've been through, all nurses, including the nurses at UW Hospital, deserve to have a union voice. During this ongoing public health crisis in the front lines of an ongoing pandemic, we know nurses with a solid union voice can better provide quality care for our patients, better advocate for our patients' safety and health, and better ensure our own health and safety for ourselves, our family, and our community. For respect, dignity, and workplace justice, please pass this resolution supporting UW nurses to gain a union voice and a fair union election at UW Hospital by the ending of the year. Thank you very much. Can I say one thing? Alex Dudek is now on. If I know that she missed her time at the beginning, can she be in queue?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. So then our next registrant is Mary Jorgensen of District 9, to be followed by Alex Dudek.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, and thank you to Alders Lemmer and Heck, Mayor Rhodes Conway, and the rest of the council for allowing me to share my story. My name is Mary Jorgensen, and I have been a registered nurse for 25 years, over 16 of which have been at UW. I currently work in the operating room. We're a Level 1 trauma center, so we get patients ranging from car crash victims to transplant recipients. And since this latest surge began in July, we've had more COVID patients than at previous points in the pandemic. I was at UW when we had a union, so I know from firsthand experience how much higher the standards were then. We had a strong union contract, and it was the foundation for attracting new nurses to the UW and keeping experienced nurses there for decades. But since the administration stopped recognizing our union, they have chipped away at that foundation. They have cut staffing ratios, benefits, continuing education, and paid sick time. Whereas before, there was open communication and dialogue with management, now there is no transparency or respect for frontline staff. In just the latest example, nurses were told that if we were out sick with COVID, we now have to deplete our own paid time off. Because management has failed to create an environment that recruits and retains nurses, we are currently facing a short staffing crisis. So many nurses have left, but sometimes we work 16-hour shifts. By the time our shifts end, we are so tired that all we can do is sleep, and we have no energy to see or interact with our families. We also want, I, sorry, I also want to be clear that UW's shared governance is a facade in which management has all the final decision-making power and nurses have none at all. I know what it's like when nurses have a real, independent union voice to make authentic policy changes, enforce safe staffing, and win fair benefits, which will recruit and retain employees. The future of UW and the standards for medical care in Madison are now up to all of you on this council. We urge you to stand with us in solidarity and to do whatever it takes to hold UW Health accountable so we can have a fair union election this year and ensure safe, quality care for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Alex Dudek of District 11.
Alex, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. I just want to begin by thanking Alders Patrick Heck and Lindsay Lemmer, Mayor Rhodes Conway, and all the Alders who have cosponsored this urgent resolution. My name is Alex Dudek, and I'm a registered nurse in our trauma and COVID intensive care unit, UW Hospital. This past year and a half has been incredibly challenging for me and my colleagues since we've put ourselves and our families on the line to provide quality care for our community. Now we're dealing with yet another COVID surge in addition to the overwhelming flood of patients with health conditions that have been worsened by the pandemic. I'm terrified of what the next few months will bring as we enter flu season and more people gather indoors and travel for the holidays. We have already been stretched so thin to care for more and more patients because of shortages of staff and resources. But this is about more than just shortages of nurses. This is about a shortage of support and care for us nurses so that we can continue this important work. We've gone without adequate personal protective equipment despite the fact that we have a stabilized supply now. Even after vaccination, many of us fear for ourselves and the health of our loved ones when we go home. We've witnessed way more patient deaths than ever before, but we still feel the pain of every single loss. We are still struggling with trauma, exhaustion, and burnout, and we're getting to feel the long-term effects of that. As a result, I've seen a lot of great nurses leaving the bedside and the field of nursing altogether. COVID is not the root cause of a lot of these problems. It's simply aggravated, deep systemic issues which have been steadily worsening at UW Health for years. We need to make sure that bedside nurses, those of us with the medical expertise who actually provide patient care, have a strong, independent voice in our work and how care is delivered. We lost our union at UW back in 2014, which has opened the door to a long series of cuts at our hospital. For example, earlier this year, UW decreased paid time off for new nurses, and we had no say in the decision. With nurses' well-being at an all-time low, limiting our time for recovery is only going to make things worse. Unlike unionized nurses, we've had no meaningful way to address our concerns. UW Health claims that their shared governance structure is sufficient, but because management has the ultimate decision-making power, there really isn't accountability. I'm speaking to you today because I haven't lost hope. I believe that we can have a fair union election so that we nurses have the power to make a decision about a union voice ourselves. We urge everyone on this council to stand with us and fight as hard for us as we've been fighting for our community during this pandemic. We ask for your support for a union voice at UW Health for the sake of our patients, our community, and the future of our entire healthcare system. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last registrant wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants on this item? All right, seeing none, then Vice President Martin, a motion, please?
Yes, I believe it's a motion to refer. Is that it?
It's a motion to adopt, Alder.
Oops, my bad. I'm looking at the wrong one. Um, yes, the motion to...
A motion to adopt, Alder Carter, as past president, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any questions or discussion on item 55? Alder Bennett.
Make this brief. To all of those that just spoke, y'all have a really soft spot in my heart. I know my mom was a nurse. She was in the union, and it was really important to her. And as like a current UW student who's feeling the effects of Act 55 and removing our rights to shared governance, with what you were saying with shared governance, I really feel that, I know what it, and I understand what it feels like to have really no say and have like the only administration power to make all of the decisions. This is an important matter to UW Health and overall, like the UW area in general, where there's only a few people making the decisions that affect thousands of others. So I'm glad we're pushing this forward. I hope that it passes, and y'all are important, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item 55? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 55. And that is the end of our agenda, unless there are any announcements or additional introductions from the floor. I will turn to Alder Benford, oh, Alder Evers.
Yeah, you know, if I'm not allowed to do this, you can correct me afterwards, but I want to invite all of you to the Good Neighbor Gathering this Saturday at Brittingham Park from 12 to 5:00. Each of you are invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Evers. I think that qualifies as an announcement. Is there any other announcements or introductions? Seeing none, Alder Benford, it's, oh, Alder Figurale Call.
I'm sorry, I have to do this, otherwise I will not hear the end of it. Thanks, untied. So on Saturday afternoon, there's the Lunas Block Party. I think it starts at noon, it goes all afternoon, and Joe has been like gently reminding me to send out information to everybody. So you guys are also invited to the Lunas Parking Lot in Ally Drive.
Thank you, Alder. I will also point out it's the Monroe Street Block Party Festival. I forget.
Yes, I'll just speak up since that's in District 13, and I'd be remiss if I didn't announce that as well. So come to all of these wonderful events going on this Saturday.
And I will see any and all of you who show up at all of them. All right, now Alder Benford, it is your turn to move adjournment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adjourn to all these wonderful events coming up.
Thank you, Alder Benford. Is there a second? I see Alder Alboras will second. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your night.
Bye.